School committee meeting, September 20th, 2022. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear the public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, and video/audio recordings are being made. This meeting of the Burlington School Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public will participate, will with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda, should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. In order to attend this meeting virtually, the access code is 2339-880-8302, and the password is Tuesday. Next, I'll do the equity statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. Ms. Monaco is feeling under the weather and will not be attending tonight, so there are just four committee members. So I want to see, are there any public participants? All right. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. And the next item is information reports. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been a week since our last school committee meeting, so we really haven't had any formal subcommittee reports at that time. I think Mr. Morin attended our last meeting and wanted more details on the warrant article for September. That's on the agenda. We can talk about that when we get to it on the agenda. That meeting is tomorrow night. So I'll plan on being at the Ways and Means meeting tomorrow night if needed. So I'll connect with Mr. Morin tomorrow.
Okay. Anyone have any subcommittee reports? I realize it was just a week, but are there any updates? Mr. Foss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The town DEIC met. We had a joint working session with the Select Board and the town administrator. Mr. Sacarino was there as well. Took place at Grand View Farm, and I think it was the first of several meetings that we will schedule over the course of this fall. And it was a productive, friendly, mostly a discussion of values, and also an opportunity for the DEIC and the Select Board to get to know each other, make some connections that I think will be very beneficial for the future work that we are going to continue to do. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else have any reports?
Excuse me. I don't have a report, and I don't have an announcement tonight, but I actually was wondering, there are sometimes just announcements, and I'm wondering if we could maybe in the future include that in this section where it would be, you know, subcommittee reports, Ways and Means, and other announcements. Sometimes it's about a community, you know, anyway.
Right, no.
I think that would be helpful, and then there'd be a place to put those announcements.
Right, I don't.
When we win the state championship and things like that.
I don't disagree. I think that's probably, it's a good idea. And the other thing, too, is that I was going to also make a comment about something that was brought up to my attention. This may not be the right place, but some parents are upset that the back-to-school night for Fox Hill and BHS are the same night. So there's a conflict. I don't know if we can do a better job, maybe not having those types of things occur on the same night in the future, but I was asked to bring that up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right.
I know Fox Hill, Fox Hill's doing two sessions, so that if parents need to go to the high school first, then they can come to the second session, or vice versa.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since we're announcing, I just want to, I was contacted by the Indian Americans for Burlington about the Diwali function on September 25th. That's Sunday from 3:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at the Burlington Commons. So just remind everyone that the, again, the Diwali celebrate, celebration is on the Burlington Commons on Sunday, September 25th, from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m.
And I want to add to that. If anyone from the school committee is intending to attend, they would like to know because they will announce that you're there. All right. And I think Steve, I don't think Steve's on. Is he for, is there anything from Ways and Means? I think we're going to discuss something later.
Mr. Morin's in a meeting right now, but plans to attend when that meeting ends.
Okay.
So.
All right, great, thank you. So the next item is learning, equity, and thriving. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at your seats is the, again, it's always a draft, but is the final copy that I would like for the school committee to go through. My goals are included as part of this that we can review. And I really would like to take some time to go through the document a little bit. And I know you've seen this already. We did, I did get some feedback and incorporated that feedback into, into the plan. But I'm going to just remind everyone, if you have an epiphany next week and you want to see something else added, the whole point of this document is that we would bring it back to this document. We would talk about it. We would fit it in. It's meant to live and change because that's the nature of the, of the work. I also think because it's such a weighty document, I also had some conversations with folks that we should approach this almost like a policy where we can do this as a first reading, get it out publicly, and then at our next meeting, do the approval. It's not going to change any of the implementation we're working towards this document already, and my goals aren't going to change in the next couple of weeks. So I'm just saying, I think that might be a very deliberate way to, to go about doing this. So again, Madam Chair, with your permission, I just want to take people through the document, if that's okay. And again, just to remind everyone that Planning for Success is a process that is developed with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Burlington was a district that piloted this process. God, we're in our third iteration now, so nine years ago. And it's just a way of organizing. Districts by reg, by regulation have to have an approved district improvement plan by the school committee, and this is a process that the Department of Education has adopted that fulfills that regulatory requirement. If there's one word I'd like you to take from the plan that you should see as alignment, you should see alignment of district efforts with school efforts and have those efforts then reflect school committee values. And again, if you see a misalignment, that would be an opportunity for conversation then for us to, to regroup. You should see the resources that you fight for, then again, applied to outcomes that, again, that reflect where you want to see us go. The district does a lot. There's a lot of detail here, but we try to distill that into buckets that we can talk about and that we can move, move forward with. So again, you should see the values that you, your constituents talk to you about. You should see, I hopefully see that reflected in the, in the plan moving forward. If you go to page four, that's really the, the roadmap as described by the school committee in terms of mission, vision, equity statement, core values. Those four areas, they have evolved since I've come to Burlington, but many, much of this language existed prior to my arrival and will exist after I move on. And I think it reflects, again, conversations in the community that have been ongoing for a long time. I know that we added a core value six or seven years ago, and so it's not like these things can't change or be adapted, but it's, again, it's really what we try to follow moving forward. Again, then our theory of, theory of action and district objectives are sort of what I work on with my staff, that if we sort of make sure that we're focusing on certain things, then we should see outcomes that where students are making effective progress, graduating from high school, ready for college career or life. Again, we want them to be contributing citizens in a global society. So I'm saying, I think that's relatively straightforward. And then our strategic objectives. Again, we try to distill lots that we do into three or four buckets, and we are currently, in this plan, describing those as learning. We're a learning organization. Equity, we, equity. We really want all students to get what they need when they need it in order to feel successful, make progress, feel like they belong. And then thriving. I think we've sometimes overlooked that learning needs to be a joyful process, that, and the thriving, please, is not just about the kids. It's about the adults in the building and in the organization as well, and making sure we do that. Facilities and finance, again, are critically important to supporting the, the top three. And I think that's one of the areas that the school committee is primarily responsible for. So we can do that moving forward. So then, again, just looking at those, those objectives and learning, and again, some of the language incorporated, some of the feedback that I've received over the last several months. We really gave this out to you in August, and you think about it when we started. And then some of the outcomes that we are looking at incorporating. Some don't have dates because honestly, these outcomes we should have seen four or five years ago, and we should see them pretty regularly. And there's not very many things we do, as those of you with lots of experience in the school committee that has a clear start date and a clear end date. I think building projects do. But other than that, sort of the learning process for kids kind of has an ambiguous start and never should end. So I'm saying we sort of have that, that's going there. If I could take your attention to page six. A change from the last draft that you saw is I eliminated all of the metrics that I had sort of been thinking about in my head. And so October is just a couple of weeks away. And so the learning metric that I would like to incorporate into school committee, again, and I want these metrics to be regular so that you can see growth over time, is that with the pandemic, we MCAS, the state test got a little bit, some of the scores got suspended, and, and there was a lot of confusion with the pandemic moving forward. We believe, obviously, we're planning that the scores from last spring reflect a couple of years of modified instruction due to the pandemic. Some remote instruction would be incorporated there, but we do have our MCAS results from last spring. And not that that is the measure of learning that is the only measure that we should be looking at, but it is one measure. And really, the function of MCAS is to give us some information on the alignment of, of our curriculum to state standards. So I, I think that would be valid work. So plan, plan on in October, I'm not exactly sure which meeting yet, but first or second meeting, the school committee will be getting a MCAS report from last spring as a learning metric. And, and again, what I'll predict now, if everything, if we don't have another pandemic, that next October, you'll get an MCAS presentation on this year's MCAS scores. And we're talking as a leadership team about other learning metrics and when we should do that as well. So the other state assessment, as you know, is the access test, and that's for our students who, English may not be their first language. We don't have all of the access test results yet, but our director of ELL, Carrie Lamprey, believes that she should be prepared in November to do that. So again, it may be that moving forward, the school committee would see MCAS results in October and access test results in November. So if you could just think about that. I have learning metrics for January and June, and we, we haven't really thought about those yet, but we're, we're talking about that as a, as a leadership team, and then we'll bring those to the committee because we should have metrics all the way, all the way through the year that show growth. And so I think that's one of the, one of the things that we will be talking about. What could they possibly be? We could look at I-ready scores. We could look at other things. There might be other, other things that we are measuring in terms of learning. It could also be, I think, I believe the committee likes seeing sort of project-based learning, too. So when students present from History Day and, and other things, those metrics are just as valid to me as some of the standardized metrics that you see. And so there, if there are other programs where you want students to come in and discuss those with you, please just let me know, and we can, again, those to me are as important learning metrics as some of the measured assessments that we, that we need to do. I'm talking at you. Any other questions about learning? We're going to move on. I apologize that we're just kind of stepping through this, but. All right, thank you. So again, equity. We have a, an audit in process, and I need to get more information as to when the conclusion of that audit is, but I'm assuming that's going to be sometime this fall, and then we will incorporate that into, that'll be an outcome that we have. But any audit that we undertake is really the start of the process, not the end of the process. So there are going to be things identified in the audit that then we need to either implement, talk about implementing, fund, change practice, change policy. So the work really starts after the, after the audit for us. And again, we're going to do that as well, looking at that moving forward. So again, if I could turn to the metrics piece, what I was planning on doing in October is a hiring summary. Maybe not transfers, but looking at, I know an objective of the school committee is for us to certainly hire talent, but also try to bring in a more diverse talent. And so we know who we've hired by now. We haven't fully hired just because of the state of everything, but we know who we've hired, and we can present that data to the school committee. I think in October, equity, again, has been our goal for a long time, not just now, but I'm just saying, I think if, if we're trying to diversify our staff, then you should get that information at the conclusion of our hiring season. So again, that would be something. How it's presented to you, if you have questions or you'd like to see it changed. So again, you might say, I'm on a pie chart or something, or this is unclear, then we can shape that at the time. But again, I think if this, if that is a priority, which I believe it is, then you should see growth in that area. And if you don't see growth, then we should have conversations about why, why not. So you should see a hiring summary. I also think a metric obviously would be the, would be the audit. I just don't know exactly when that's going to come out or when I would do that, and maybe November. So I just didn't want to put that down, but that would be a metric that you would see in regards to equity. And then thriving, which I think is, is sort of the most interesting to me. So, and so again, you see some of the outcomes that we're going to be looking at in terms of, I like to call this at the elementary school, best day ever is when the kids come home and say, yeah, the best day ever. That's a great thing, and that's a metric. We should keep track of those, actually. And but, so if you go again to the metrics page for thriving, a couple of things that I'd like to do in October is, as you all know, our enrollment report is due to the state October 1st. That's the, those are the numbers that drive our Chapter 70 funding from the state. So again, I just think, given all that, we should probably give the school committee October 1st numbers. So those are the ones that carry us through. And then I was thinking a thriving measure that would be relatively simple for us to do, and we can break it down by different groups of students as well, would be attendance. I think if students are coming to school, then that's an indication that they, they're coming to school. There might be other thriving metrics that you think of or that, again, the leadership team, my staff, principals think of that we can incorporate in there. But I at least think for October, you should see sort of where we're standing with attendance and, to date, early in the year, and then based on our enrollment. Because no matter what a great job we do, if the kids aren't in school, it's, it's hard for us to accomplish that. And I think a lot of what the committee does is really about getting kids to school. You provide transportation, right? You have no fees for activities. You encourage robust curriculum. Those are all, for me, connected to, to thriving. Please, I'm sorry, I'm talking.
If, if you're done with this thriving section, I did want to make a comment. We have this 35 or 40-page document in front of us, and nobody who's listening knows what's on it. And I, I, I'm very pleased with the breadth, in particular of this thriving section. And am I correct? You were saying that now that this is out as a first draft, so then this would be like posted on the website?
Yeah.
In the next week, maybe?
We'll try to get it up as soon as we can.
Okay. But I just wanted to mention, in this thr, in this third section called thriving, some of the initiatives and strategies that we're looking, and outcomes that we're looking for have to do with this metrics that Dr. Conti just mentioned. They have to do with mental and physical health. They have to do, and there's something entitled Portrait of a BPS Graduate, and that's referencing what is our vision for student success. And I know that there have been some conversations at the school level about what the staff and the, each school is looking at that. And I think my, am I correct, Dr. Conti, that it's going to come at some point to the level of the school committee, and we'll have that conversation as well about the vision of student success? The next area is alignment, which you've referenced. Another is to help get with some consultants to get coaching so that our educator evaluations, o, o, oops. Sorry. So our educator evaluations will be as if, as effective and supportive to the teachers and the improvement of instruction so that students can learn. Also, it will develop additional culturally responsive teaching practice. And there's a number of areas where that's, that are mentioned in here. Part of what made me think of listing all of these for, for folks is it includes food services. In what ways are we representing our goals and values through healthy nutrition that would support students developing strategies to address certain deficits and making sure that there's cultural competency in that department as well? As well as, I, I believe there's been some efforts to broaden some of the cultural offerings in our food service department. Another is to develop further our communications and website, which is a, one of my favorite things to say we're not doing a good enough job at. Another is community connections to, to continue to develop, both with our, our English learner pack, our special education pack, the DEI student advisory, partnering with families, and all those things. And the last section is to look at our evening academy and possibly expand it to increase that opportunity for other students as well. And that's, that's just an example of the specific areas that we're looking to develop strategies and ensure outcomes that we want in the area of thriving in this document. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
And then the last two pieces, really, from the district. Well, there's a few more, but the, I would say that sort of under my umbrella would be the, the finance. And again, I want to thank Ms. Kasha for working on her three-year plan and communicating that in, in the Planning for Success, sort of in that format. And hopefully that can, again, her efforts are going to align with the rest of the district's efforts. And, and again, you can see that. A metric for the, for finances, obviously, you get your monthly expense presentation, and that's going to be starting in, next month. So again, that, you have a monthly metric on, on that, and then budget season starts too quickly. But also, there's, there's going to be a financial connection to many of the other outcomes that are in the other parts of the plan. Ms. Simon mentioned food service. Most of our conversations about food service are financial, and maybe we need to broaden that a little bit, and then there could be a financial impact if, if that's the case. If we have a price point of $2.50 for a lunch, there's really not much you can do with $2.50. I would challenge anybody to provide lunches for that, and I'm not sure that's our price point. I was just kind of talking off the top of my head. But it might be something that we would want to discuss and, and, and talk about. So, because I think there are many, the world changes quickly, and I, again, I think providing, expecting our lunch program to be self-funded at this point may, may not be possible. Was, I guess, what I'm trying to say. But we should talk about that. And then obviously, we have, and with finance, we have facilities. We have many things going on. In fact, this is a kind of a short section, but that doesn't mean it's going to require lots of attention and lots of funding moving, moving forward. So, so we're going to be talking about, talking about that moving. So then, if you get to page 14, again, my goals are meant to be approved by the school committee. They're meant to be public. I have a student learning goal and a professional practice goal, as does every, every other educator and administrator in the district. So again, I'm not going to read these to you. You all can read, but I was going to give you a couple of minutes to review the goals. The goals are obviously aligned with the rest of the, with, with the rest of the plan. And the, the point is that principal goals, the goals of principals, excuse me, I didn't want to confuse everyone. The goals of principals will align with my goals as well. So we'll all be trying to, again, work in that same direction. We were having some silent reading, so hopefully now you can hear us. So now we're done with the silent reading part. And then the, the appendices in the plan include a three-year plan for English learner education. Again, the finance section was repeated, so that's just in the plan twice. It's also included in an appendancy. And then we have the mental health, social-emotional health plan, again, for three years, the special education plan for three years, and then the glossary of terms. And then the, the central office staff has been, has been identified with their roles. I just did want to point out, and I know Mrs. Monaco's not here, but I just wanted to channel her for a minute. If you go to page 30, and you look at the learning initiatives for special education, there is a, going to be a focus on looking at professional development for all teachers, special education, general education, and reading instruction, accommodating, modifying curriculum. So she is, we are going to be looking at who has what training and what licensing and expanding into some specific programs that she mentioned in terms of the specifics, Wilson Reading and, and other programs that she did. So I know that was a lot of talking at you. I, I apologize. I really am, post-pandemic, going to be more disciplined about organizing your agendas, our conversations around what it is we're doing. We can always expand what we're doing, so please don't feel this is a limiting document. But I would like, if there's a direction that we need to go and that you feel is really important, that we fit it into the direction, sort of the plan, because that's the easiest way for us to communicate across a very large organization is that if they were talking about many of the same things moving forward. And in that way, everyone who works in the district is supporting the same, the same priorities. And I think that's, that's important.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, comments, or shall we move on? Okay. Next item is building coverage issues.
Thank you. We had a recent leadership team meeting with all of our building leaders and asked them sort of what their biggest challenge is early in the year, and coverage came up. And we're not fully staffed in regards to our permanent subs, our per diem subs. We're having trouble finding folks to, to do that. We're asking lots of people to cover classes, tutors, and sometimes our instructional assistants. And when they're covering classes, they're not providing the services that they need to provide. So if we're asking people to do other things, what I just wanted to make sure is we looked at what the district can do as well. So Nicole prepared for you the sheet that talks about what our current daily rate is for a daily substitute or a per diem, that we call that, a permanent substitute, a retired teacher substitute, and a substitute nurse. And then, again, I'll let Nicole talk. And then again, I'll let Nicole talk about some of the comps that she did. And then if we were to make some changes, there's a, there's a cost to that. But right now, I feel like we're not being competitive. And if we need to make these changes, and it, again, may not result in all of this expense, but I wanted to make sure the committee was aware of the potential financial impact. And everyone agrees to it now. My concern is in, is in May or June. And it may require a conversation at that point if, again, if we have to cover the expense or if we need to talk about that. So that's kind of how my mind works, is we definitely need the support. And if we have to make a market-based change, given this current state of not being able to find substitutes, and Bob, you said you're having trouble with substitute CAF workers and substitute custodians. And we still even run short of bus drivers still once in a while. We're better, much better. But so with that, so Nicole, would you mind talking about some of the comp work that you did and then some of what we discussed? And thanks.
Sure. Through the chair. So I pulled Middlesex League comps. And if we were to adjust our daily by $20, permanent subs by 25, retired by five, and nurses by five, that would bring us within the average of the Middlesex, the comparisons that we pulled. And this is sort of, I guess, a difficult analysis to do because we don't have like a crystal ball, knowing how many absences we're going to have and how much coverage. And even if we raise the rates, if it's going to yield a higher fill rate. So if, assuming that the trends are the same as the last, consistent with the last three years, it would be about 140,000 would probably be like the, the most that, that would impact the budget. We have our current sub budgets around 650,000. And we did add a little bit in this fiscal year to our budget, I think knowing that we were going to be addressing possible rate changes for subs. So that's about like a, I guess, a $53,000 buffer that we sort of had in there. So I guess the, it leaves about an $87,000 maybe additional expenditure that we didn't budget for. But I think in our choice account right now, we have about 270,000 and international 235. So if we sort of saw that this was trending in that direction, that we would have ample funds to cover it.
I have a question. When was the last time we made any kind of an adjustment? How many years ago?
I don't think I've seen one since I've been here. So I'm not sure.
That's interesting.
Through the chair.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't think I've heard of any additional increases since I've been here either.
And you've been seven years now?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Foss?
I do think that we do need to do something to try to get people in the building, of course. In my own school, I'm seeing similar issues with trouble getting subs. I guess my question is, and we have to look into the crystal ball, I suppose, but if we increase rates, does that mean other districts are going to increase rates? Is there going to be some kind of arms race as a competition for subs increases? I'm just, I don't know. Any speculation?
Through the chair, again, I think per diem substitute tend, tend to work in districts where they're sort of have some familiarity. And then perm subs really wouldn't be shifting school to school. So I do think there's a marketplace. A creative thing that I've heard a neighboring district do is that they call it Uber pricing. So if there's a Friday before, or a Friday or a Monday, their per diem rates are actually higher than Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. That's a little bit complex. But again, I thought we needed to be marketplace-sensitive first and then see if that makes a difference. And then I, I think if we're, again, asking people to cover, which is an important piece, and I'm reiterating here that, and Mr. Foss, you can confirm or not confirm this, but it's easier for teachers, as hard as it is, to come to work than to be out. So it's not, people aren't, if we have more subs, that's not going to incentivize more absenteeism, is what I'm saying. And I don't want to project that out. It's, I hate even to say the term easiest. It requires much less planning to show up and run your own classroom than to prepare for someone else to run your own classroom.
Hundred percent correct.
But the, but we still need people to, to cover because we, again, we have teachers doing double duties. We have specialists covering for other teachers. And it's just, it's impacting the core experience that we're trying to protect. So again, I would support making the change to at least the average and then seeing if that has an impact. And then hopefully, we would alleviate some of the stress that we're having. And then if we have to do other things, we would come back to the committee at that, at that time. And again, I think Nicole has prepared the budget, so we have some, some ability to sort of cover the unexpected. And again, we haven't had, the reason rates haven't been a problem is we've been able to fill the positions for, for many, many years. Our perm subs are entitled to benefits, which is a great reason. And again, may not be reflected in the daily rate, but that's a great financial benefit for those families. And so we are, again, I just think this, I would recommend a change as Nicole has presented.
I just have a comment that I think if we've learned nothing over the past couple of years, we don't want folks coming to school sick or work sick. So I think having the ability to let those folks take a sick day is something that I definitely want to be able to support. What is the qualifications for a substitute? Just?
We've been changing that as well. So for, again, for a perm sub, we typically want a, at least an associate's degree or for a per diem. But we are, if people are now progressing towards an associate degree or have a diploma, we'll certainly interview people to come in. So again, I would just say simply a high school diploma is what I would, what I would say. Hasn't been our practice, but I think now we need, we need people to come in. So.
Thank you. And I saw conflicting information in the paperwork, but are you want to vote on this, this evening?
Do we need a vote?
Do we need a vote?
Yeah.
This said update, and then another page said vote. So I wasn't sure which it was.
That's my mistake.
Okay.
That's my mistake, Madam Chair. I apologize again. I would add, I would say maybe we could do a first reading, second reading, but we really need to implement this change quickly. So I think I just messed up the agenda item, so I apologize.
Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that I knew what we were trying to do. Ms. Simon, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment that I do support this. I, I think that even though we have people who stay for a long time, that the morale is not good when, you know, there's no raise after many years with committed staff people. If you actually figured out the hourly rate, it's not very high. And I, I do think it's important for us to raise it. And especially where Ms. Kasha's, you know, identified where in the budget we can fund this. I think it's really important. And I think it's important also because of what you just referenced, that if teachers or assistant paraprofessionals are being pulled out of other things, then it makes it harder to provide the education that we're trying very hard to provide, you know, good quality. And there are other things that we pull teachers out of classrooms for, whether it's a training and/or special education meetings. And I think the more we can have consistent coverage, the better it is. So I strongly support this. I also want to add something that we won't be discussing, deciding on tonight. But I think that it may be true also for our tutor positions. And maybe some other day, we can look at the tutor positions or IA. You know, the IAs have their own union, but I don't know that the tutors do. But I'd like to look at that as well because, again, if we're not keeping up with the averages around here and if there's no increase over many years because they're not in a union, it's, it's hard for morale, even though those are really committed staff that we have too.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. And I just want to say, I also support this. I mean, not only for all the reasons you stated, but, I mean, again, if you look at this, we haven't touched this in seven years plus. I mean, I think it's probably time that we do something about it and try to get the quality people that we want to come in. So does someone want to make a motion?
Just, Madam Chair, just before you do that, Mrs. O'Meara texted me. She said historically, per diem is an associate's degree and a perm sub is a bachelor's. Ms. Masardo, you asked what we have done historically, so those, those were the qualifications. We've been not following those qualifications recently, just to try to get people here.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we increase the substitute rates as presented.
Second. Okay. Any additional discussion?
Just because I'm slow, Ms. Kasha, just to clarify, we have a partial cushion built into the budget. And we're going to see how these rate increases go and potentially move from one account to another to cover if needed. Is that right? Thank you.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I'm an aye, so that's a four zero zero. Okay. And the next item on the agenda is facilities and finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, we have two standing agenda items, which I'm not sure we have any progress. There may be an announcement of upcoming Fox Hill Building Committee to date. But again, Bob, just to say, we submitted to the MSBA our selection for an owner's project manager. And we're waiting to hear back from, they've acknowledged receipt of everything. And we're just waiting to hear back from them in terms of when we're going to be on the MSBA's agenda for their approval.
Through the chair. So yes, correct. Everything Dr. Conti just stated is where we're at in the process. We are planned for the October 3 opm selection MSBA board meeting. They typically send out those invitations during the week of. So right now, we are still in the waiting period or the waiting phase. There is an announcement for an upcoming meeting. We will be scheduling one for October 12. And I will send out invitations, and we will post that agenda shortly.
Thank you. Mr. Foss?
That, the MSBA meeting, are they usually at 10 o'clock or somewhere in the mid-morning range? Is that right?
Through the chair. So typically, yes, in the daytime. I don't know if it's 10 o'clock yet.
Okay.
It's not even posted on their website yet what time it is.
Got you. Thank you.
And then any updates for BHS? The next one.
Through the chair. So not for the standing item as is particularly. I do want to say that we are two days into the later high school start time. So far, we are seeing positive reviews on the buses as far as the timing getting here. So students are getting here on time that are taking the buses. And I do want to let everyone know that we are expecting the turf. It has been shipped either late, late tonight or early first thing tomorrow morning. Two trucks should be here for the varsity field. And it's expected to, crews to be here tomorrow to at least unload and start installing the turf. We do have some equipment that was already dropped here for the installation. So again, fingers crossed that there's no traffic jams and the equipment does get here so we can work on the turf field.
Excellent news. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Oh, Ms. Simon, question?
So I, I just wanted to raise the issue that we talked about last spring of having a school building committee for the high school renovation. We talked about maybe discussing it further in the fall. And I would like us to begin that discussion. If not tonight, then I'd like to have it as an agenda item at our next meeting. I am thrilled that we're currently focused on and moving forward with the Fox Hill project. And I'm very positive about the opm that we've selected and forwarded to the MSBA for their approval. I'm very excited about all that. However, the BHS HVAC system is still on the brink of failure. Our science labs are still from 1971. The longer we wait, the more expensive it will be. If the HVAC system dies before we do the renovation, it will cost us millions, additional millions to heat and cool the building until we can replace the HVAC system. We have perhaps naively been hoping for MSBA financial support. And understandably, you know, that's a big chunk of money. And we've been wishing to wait for a better time. But the project has been on the town's capital budget for over 10 years. And I, I don't believe we can wait any longer. And I believe it's urgent that we begin this process by establishing a school building committee. And so if we could have that as an agenda item at our next meeting, to have that discussion of what we'd like to see, I, I think that would be really important.
Agreed. Mr. Foss, you had a question or a comment?
Thank you. Mr. Cooney, you mentioned buses, and I'm glad to hear about the success for the first couple of days of the time changes. I'm just curious, last meeting, you had mentioned somewhere in the range of 150 requests for changes. And you had accommodated, I think, at least half of those? Are you still getting requests for changes? And if so, or, I mean, I guess in general, how are the, not just the high school routes, but all the routes going? Are people still asking for changes or are you still making changes?
Through the chair. I don't want to get ahead of myself, but we have gotten less requests this week and two days than we have in the first couple of weeks of school. So I hope that's trending down. We have made more than the 80 changes since our last meeting. And we've even made changes today. So, you know, we'll continue to review the routes, any way that we can make them more efficient. Any way we see ridership changing, we'll adjust those routes. Again, throughout the whole entire year, we'll continually look at that. But I think we're trending towards the point where we're close to being good. And if there are some follow-up requests, you know, we'll continue to take those and review them.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. So the next item is September Town Meeting warrant article.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Bob. Is, is Mr. Morin?
Is he here yet? Do you want to postpone it?
I think it's relatively self-explanatory, so we can follow up with, with Mr. Morin and, at a later time. But again, Nicole, you want to, in your backup, just want to explain the, the warrant article. And again, it's in your packet. School committees can enter into three-year agreements. If we have to go beyond three years or a continuation of, we need approval from Town Meeting, which is why this is going to Town Meeting. So Nicole?
Sure. Through the chair. So there is, back in June of 2020, we had a warrant article to select a new curriculum for, for civics for the middle school. And now that they have decided which one that they wanted to move forward with, there was a significant cost savings with a six-year contract. The warrant article total was for 90,000. The six-year contract is $80,842, as opposed to just a one-year contract is 43,000. So would well exceed that, the amount of the article over a six-year period. So it just seemed like a no-brainer here to save $180,000 over, over six years to move forward with a six-year contract.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Simon?
First of all, I want to thank you, Nicole, for finding this and figuring it out and bringing it forward. I also want to clarify for Town Meeting and other people, we would still be budgeting annually in our school budget for the cost of that year's contract. Is that accurate? Or would we pay upfront the whole amount? Oh, no, it's not, it's not budgeted annually?
It's not in our operating budget. It's a warrant article, capital warrant article.
So it's, so what would this, so the amount of money they already approved would cover? Are we expected to pay the six-year contract at the beginning? So we're asking Town Meeting to add that additional amount of money?
Nope. There's no, there's no funding, additional funding being requested. The total for six years is $80,842.52. The total of the article that was already approved was 90,000.
It's less than the warrant article we already had approved? So we, okay. So, we, okay.
It's just the, the term of the contract, six years is what we need to apply.
Okay, so, let me try again to clarify, which I didn't get the first time around, but we are not asking Town Meeting for any additional money. We are asking a legal permission to do a six-year contract, which would otherwise not be allowed.
Correct.
So, this won't cost the district or the town any additional monies? Okay.
No, in fact, what we're saying is it will save us $180,000 over those six years, is what we're saying.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or clarification? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So, moved to, oh, I guess we need, I'd like to move that we approve this article to see if the town will vote. Should I read the whole thing? Is that how?
As presented by Nicole.
As presented in, in our backup, that we moved, approve this article.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm an aye, so four, zero, zero. All right. We are moving right along. Okay, so, we do have need for executive session, and under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 3, this is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district, and Chair so declares BEA, Union Contracts, approval of executive session minutes for eight, 16, 22 as well. The school committee will only return to public session for the purpose of adjournment. Do I have a motion?
I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to take a roll call. Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Four, zero, zero. We're going into executive session.